Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by your local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Harvey L. Hall.
At this time, I'll call to order the City Council Meeting of December the 14th, 2016, and acknowledge that all council members are present. I certainly would like to welcome all of you for this very, very special council meeting this evening. We have a lot of good, positive things with presentations and messages to share with all of you and to welcome our incoming two new council members, Andre Gonzalez and Jeff Tac. And I appreciate all of you that are here tonight for supporting the new council members and giving your indirect support to Vice Mayor Hanson and Councilmember Terry Maxwell. They too have done an outstanding job for the City of Bakersfield during their tenure. I do gratefully appreciate your acknowledgement. This will be my last regularly scheduled city council meeting after 16 years, and thank you for acknowledging me. I loved my work from the very first day that I started. I'm going to miss all of the thousands of activities that I've been able to give recognition for in our community. And today, I decided that when I'm done on January the 3rd, that I'm going to encourage people to call me Mayor Hall and not Harvey and not Mr. Hall, but Mayor Hall. I want to carry that recognition with me forever. At this time, I would like us all to stand for the invocation to be presented by Matt Berg, youth pastor, Calvary Bible Church, and please remain standing for the presentation of colors by the Bakersfield High School Air Force Junior ROTC, and the pledge of allegiance by Zoe and Isaac Ellis, who are the grandchildren of great-grandchildren. Thank you, Grandma, of Councilmember Sullivan.
Dear Father, we thank you for everyone gathered here now. Thank you that you know each of us by name and have caused us to walk with you. We say that we are dependent on you and our trust is in you completely. As we surrender ourselves in adoration, we ask that you would come by your Holy Spirit and inspire our hearts this evening. Come fill our lives with your love. Fill our meeting with your grace and your truth. Fill this meeting with your presence. We ask this for your glory and your praise and all these things. Amen.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors, right, face, Howard, Halt!
This evening, I want all of you to know that you are all special guests this evening to our city council meeting. And as I've said, I appreciate your presence here tonight. I would like to further recognize past city council person Sue Binham, who did a marvelous job during her time as a city council member, and she's here tonight to support her friend, Andre Gonzalez. Thank you, Sue, for your presence. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is a resolution number 191-16 declaring the results of the general municipal election for the office of Mayor and Councilmember for Wards 2, 5, and 6, held in the City of Bakersfield on November 8, 2016.
Vice Mayor Hanson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. You realize, of course, that this is my last motion, and I'm not sure I want to do it. Most of you adopt.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Mayor, I'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Hanson. A roll call vote. Vice Mayor Hanson.
It's for you, ma'am.
What was it?
Roll call.
Oh, Hanson, yes, yes, yes.
He's already on the next boat to China.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Parlier.
Yes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
At this time, I would request that Vice Mayor Hanson and Councilmember Maxwell to join me at the podium for a special presentation. the opportunity to recognize Vice Mayor Hanson and Councilmember Maxwell. The first presentation that I would like to make is a plaque from the City of Bakersfield presented to Harold Hanson, Councilmember, Ward 5, in appreciation for 16 years of leadership, dedicated service, and your commitment to the citizens of Bakersfield. The City of Bakersfield, 2016. You're almost done. It is my honor and pleasure to present to Vice Mayor Harold Hanson a key to the city. The key to the city of Bakersfield is presented to Vice Mayor Hanson in recognition of your service to the Bakersfield community as the Ward 5 representative to the Bakersfield City Council, 2012 to 2016, as well as two terms of service as the City of Bakersfield's Vice Mayor, 2006 to 2008, and 2014 to 2016. This presentation is dated today's date, December 14, 2016. My next presentation is recognition for Councilmember Terry Maxwell, and the plaque reads, "Presented to Terry Maxwell, Councilmember, Ward 2, in appreciation for four years of leadership, dedicated service, and your commitment to the citizens of Bakersfield. For the City of Bakersfield, 2016." It's my honor and pleasure to present my second key to the city this evening, and it's presented to Councilmember Terry Maxwell in recognition of your service to the Bakersfield community as the Ward 2 representative to the Bakersfield City Council, 2012 to 2016, and it's for December the 14th, 2016. comments?
Mayor Hall, thank you very much. Yes, I would. Mayor Hall, most people don't know, but you and I have known each other for probably about 45 years. Mayor Hall was an ambulance driver when I was working at Memorial Hospital, I'm sorry, Mercy Hospital when I was growing up. I was going to college, and we took an instant liking of each other many nights when he was working late and I was working late. And, you know, working with you for the last four years has been an absolute pleasure. You are a credit to this community, and I just can't imagine having had anybody else in your position. You've helped me to clarify my positions on things. You've been a counselor. You've been somebody who has imparted wisdom to me, and I just want you to know how much I tremendously appreciate that. I'd like to start way to my left. Councilmember Parlier and I were the two representatives for this city who went down to the funeral for David Nelson, and that was a tremendous experience. I'm sorry that others couldn't have come down and joined us. It was 34 years since we'd lost an officer, and I hope it's never again, but this is something I will remember for the rest of my life. It was really wrenching to your heart to be there and to be in the presence and to see the awe of what happens when a police officer is taken down. So, I am really happy that we made that trip, Chris. And I do want to note one thing. Mayor Hall was there too. He was on vacation, came off vacation to make that trip, and I think that's one of the most honorable things I've seen happen. I'd like to mention a few things about my colleague, Mr. Rivera. Councilmember Rivera and I have had a tremendous good time here. While everybody else is being serious, he and I can usually see the lightheartedness in things. And while everybody else has got a serious look on their face, fortunately, the camera wasn't on us because we were usually laughing about something. He has got a tremendous wit. He's one of the brightest people I've met. He is a credit. To Ward 1, he's doing things for you guys that indicates to me that he is not a partisan person. He has been here representing his constituents, and he's done it in a magnificent style. I look forward to many more years of being good friends with Councilmember Rivera, and as I say, we're all up here as nonpartisan representatives, and he demonstrates that better than anybody I've ever seen. Harold, in the last two years, I don't think anybody realizes how much time Councilmember Hanson, Vice Mayor Hanson, has put into this job. He actually had to go into retirement just so he could spend more time down at City Hall trying to coordinate all the different things, and there's a lot of moving parts in the last two years. He spent tremendous time. And, you know, Harold, you are a great example of somebody who, on this council, can come together with other council people and help them out when he has to, disagree with them respectfully, and never hold it against them. Because Harold and I have had many coffee meetings, and we've had disagreements on different subjects, but we always walk away with that respect for each other, and it's never come in between our friendship, and I think that's admirable. It's what I value in having Harold as a good friend. Somebody who's not here tonight, who really isn't on the dais, but I think somebody that we should at least say something about is a man named Theo Douglas. He worked for the paper. He's the city rep. And, you know, for four years, I got a phone call routinely from Theo Douglas, and I have to say that Theo always did a great job of representing my thoughts and my intentions because sometimes when you're on the spot and somebody's asking you tough questions, you don't necessarily use the best words. But he never lost the sight of what I was trying to convey, and I appreciated some of the nice comments he made about me because he did like calling me. I was always aware of what was going on and on top of the situation and was free to talk about it. As people know from me, there isn't a subject that I won't at least discuss. As far as the staff is concerned, this city has got some of the most phenomenal people working here. I want to personally thank Nick Fiddler and his predecessor, Raul Rojas. They're in the Public Works, they were the Public Works Department and Directors, and there were times when I was really trying to get something done for Ward 2, and both of those people really came through for me. I consider them great individuals. They're honest people. I know that Nick is a good Christian, and he wears that on his sleeve, and I just can't tell you how much I appreciate that. Jackie, congratulations. I think you'll do very well as the new director, and I was looking forward to having more time with you, but I'll just call you on the phone and house you some other way from now on. Chief Greener, our fire chief, has been an inspiration to me also. He runs a great department, and he gave me some information. Everybody knows I like to read and be right up on top of all of the different subjects, and he really helped me out on knowing more about the police, about the fire department, and some of the things that they needed. I would say the same thing about the new Chief Martin. Lyle and I have developed a great friendship, mutual respect for each other. When I needed things done, Lyle's the guy that could get it done, and, you know, he's going to be a great leader. He's going to be a great leader. I think that he probably has the toughest job in the next four years of anybody on the whole staff. He's going to be grappling with some really, really tough stuff. I know he has got the tenacity and the good intentions to do a great job. I hope that the city council has got the backbone to give him what he needs because he's going to need a lot. Everybody knows our community is right now in a position where they're looking at the police department as a problem solver for some of the things going on in our communities. Last person I'd like to talk about is our city attorney, Jenny Gennaro. I have had great respect for Ms. Gennaro. She's somebody you can go to and glean a lot of wisdom. You know, there's times when I didn't want to do a 45-minute presentation. I actually wanted to do about a two-hour presentation, and once she reined me in and convinced me that there were better ways of diskin a cat, I always listened to what she had to say. I like to read Proverbs every morning, and Proverbs talks about gaining wisdom through others. Jenny is a tremendous asset. She really keeps all of us up here out of trouble when sometimes we don't do necessarily what is legal or what is questionable. So, she always is there to help us, and I hope that she's with this city for a long time. When I ran four years ago, I ran because I wanted to do service to my community. I never spent time in the military. I've never really contributed to my community or to my country, other than vote every chance I got, and this was a blessing to me. It was a blessing to be up here. It was a blessing that the people in Ward 2 entrusted me to take on some of the most controversial and toughest issues that this city has seen in a long, long time because most of the controversy did lie in Ward 2. And I had three things that I really had committed myself to. Number one was telling people what I believed, not what I believe they want to hear. I have sought after the truth since I've been here. I've told the truth, and I've sought after the truth. I think I've completed that for my constituents. The one thing that I always wanted was to be a representative for my constituents. I didn't view myself as being voted in to be a part of any voting bloc or that I had a certain philosophy that I was supposed to follow, and I know at times that has upset some people, and I'm sorry for that. I'm sorry that that upset you, but you didn't elect me, my constituents did, and my constituents had some issues that they thought were very important. Two of those issues were, of course, 24th Street and Centennial Corridor. And when I first got on here, I was against both those projects, but, you know, I didn't have real good reasons to be against them. And as I spent my time, and I'm literally talking about hundreds of hours learning about both those issues, I found reasons to be against both those projects. And I guess I had thought that if I can find those issues, that it might be important to my colleagues, but that's what makes it a city council. It's not that I get to call all the shots, and my council members didn't feel that those things were important, and that's their right. So, I thanked them for listening to what I had to say. I thank the people of Ward 2 for giving me this opportunity for four years. My wife's pretty happy that I'm not going to be spending hundreds of hours going over reports and leaving lots of papers all over the house. She's happy about that. And I know that God closes doors and opens new ones. Some of the things that I've done here on the council, and I've mentioned the two big things that I got involved in, which are subjects I did not shy away from, which a lot of people probably would have given the same challenges, but I've done a lot on this council. You know, I've completed in four years what a lot of people take 16 years to do, and it's been a great ride. This was thrilling. I really enjoyed this tremendously. At no time was I in a position where I felt slighted by the amount of time that I was spending. And, you know, I have to say thank you to my wife and our two grandchildren, Lucy and Brody, because without them, this would not have been possible. I would not have been able to spend the kind of time and put the kind of effort into this that I had desired. But I'd like to end on one thing because people don't understand what it's like to work with some of the people that work for this great city. And I'm not talking about the people you see in the paper. I'm not talking about the people up here. I'm talking about the people that you don't see, the people that I fortunately came in contact with routinely, the secretaries, the people who work for the directors, the people who really do the lion's share of what makes this city run. One person that I'd like to point out to you is somebody who is in front of us or in front of you right now, and that's Roberta Gafford. She is the first person you meet when you decide you're going to run for election. She's a city clerk. She does a great job, and, you know, if this world were filled with more Roberta Gaffords, it'd be a better world. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Maxwell, and for your special recognition of the mayor. I appreciate that. Vice Mayor Hanson, would you like to offer some comments?
I would. Actually, this isn't the way I expected to leave the council. Humility, being humble, is losing an election, but it isn't all that bad because I got a good replacement. Actually, you know what? Up till last night, I was thinking about contacting the city attorney and thinking about having a recall on the votes for the 5th ward. Now, hear me out. I've talked to hundreds of people, maybe thousands, I'm exaggerating a little bit, but I haven't met one person that hasn't voted for me. They all voted for me. Something's wrong. Anyway, I want to say to Jeff that congratulations, I've known Jeff for a long time, good guy, okay? Jeff, congratulations. You ran a great campaign. I know you do a good job up here, and I'm looking forward to it, so congratulations to you. I'd like to also congratulate Andre. I know that you're going to do your best, and I don't know you well, but congratulations to you and best wishes. And of course, to my old friend Jackie, after 16 years, that it's wonderful to see you back in the heart of the city. Good luck to you, Jackie, everyone back here. Also, I would like to say one other thing. There's a guy by the name of Ryan Nance that ran against Jeff and I, and the three of us. For those that haven't run in one of these things, it's an interesting process, and I'm not talking about going out and getting the money or knocking on doors, this type of thing, the marketing, but I'm talking about your personal commitment. And I think that when you run, at least at this level, I don't know about state, federal, but you kind of put it on the line. I mean, I know that in Ward 5, I know so many people. I know Jeff knows a lot of people. I know Ryan Nance knew a lot of people, but they know a lot about you. You have to kind of put your heart and soul out there. So, I want to say that to Ryan Nance, and he's not here tonight, but congratulations to him that, you know, he did a good job, and I'm really glad that he tried to do his thing. I'm going to just, for the sake of time, go through things fairly quickly here. I don't want to be quite as long as Terry, but I didn't time him tonight. But I really want to say thank you to- But I really want to say thank you to my wife, Lana. Now, I've been here 16 years. She was here the first time, and she's here the last time. I don't think she's ever been in between. But Lana, it's good to have you here. Thank you, dear, and I love you very much. A couple of people I work with that are not necessarily in our group, the city, but I'd like to make a comment. Erin Akimi, some of you may know him. He's the CEO of the Kern Cog, and certainly Bob works in Kern Cog. And very instrumental in working with the city as far as getting money, the roads, traffic, this type of thing. So I want to say thank you to Erin. I worked with him for many years on the board, and as chairman of that thing. And Erin, yes, Erin, if you're listening, I hope you make general someday. Also, the Samuel Keane Valley Partnership. This was a board that I was appointed by the governor, of all things, me being a staunch Republican, a Democrat, but I've enjoyed that association. The League of Cities that I talked to Karen tonight about, that as vice mayor, I represented the city of Bakersfield on that thing, but it's very, very important. And the city of Bakersfield, as the ninth-largest city in the state, is now being recognized as an up-and-coming. We're no longer just down in the weeds. But I do want to say especially, my favorite board was the Water Board, okay? As Art Chianello and his group over there, these guys have just done a terrific job. I've been on the board for 16 years, thanks to my start, Mark Salvaggio appointed me originally. I finally worked my way up to the board chairman. But the Water Board, for all you folks, is very, very critical things that happen in that area. And I want to say thank you to Art, particularly Art, for doing that. One other person I want to comment on is David Couch. He's on the Board of Supervisors, but David was a council member for many, many years. David was very, very instrumental in helping us with the tax split situation and working with the city members. Without David, I don't think we'd ever got that thing done. And Chris Yowat was certainly involved in that on behalf of the city. So thanks to both of them. And also, David was involved with the Kern Sustainability Agency, doing some things there. And I'd like to thank Jenny and Steve Talya, because without those two guys and working with Kern Delta, those things would not be possible. For the sake of time, I'm just going to say thank you to the police, the fire, particularly to Doug Greener and Tyler Hartley, Public Works, Legal, Recreation Parks, all the other people who have supported me 100%. Cannot take this chant this moment not to thank Roberta Gafford and her staff. Roberta, our city could not operate without these folks. So thank you, Roberta. Thank you for all the ladies on there. Finally, or a couple more, to Jenny Gennaro. She is not only one of the smartest attorneys I've ever worked with, but additionally, a terrific leader, and she has amazing common sense for an attorney. So Jenny, thank you. You're really good. Okay. And finally, Alan Tandy, our city manager. What can I say? You know, in my opinion, he's been responsible in working with the council to take the city to new heights. I really believe that. Alan is our city leader, and Alan, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. Lastly, I want to, I'm not going to go through each individual council member, but all you folks up here have just been a pleasure to work with, each one of you I really dearly care for, and I hope that we continue to be able to associate with each other in some capacity. And to the mayor, you know, people talk about Bakersfield, the mayor being a figurehead. Maybe past mayors were figureheads, but let me tell you something. In my, well, actually, longer, but the last two years as the vice mayor, that I've gone to this guy, Harvey Hall, Mayor Harvey Hall, several times, asked him for his two cents worth, and believe me, he always gives it. But he's been a source to all of us of wise, wise counsel. And Harvey, Mayor Hall, I appreciate that very much. Thank you. And a couple of other things, quickly, quickly. To my donors, thank you. Sorry, guys. And lastly, to the citizens of Ward Five, thank you for putting your trust and allowing me to represent you for the last 16 years. It was my honor. Good night, folks. Merry Christmas. God bless everyone. God bless Bakersfield, and thanks for the memories.
Before Councilmember Maxwell and Vice Mayor Hanson leave the dais, is there any council members who would like to make any closing comments? Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just certainly want to bid well to the council members that have served with their hearts and always felt that their vote was being placed in the right way. And Harold, you have been an excellent vice mayor. And does that mean, gosh, that means now I'm going to be the most senior person on the council, Dulp? I always knew that you, you were the most senior person. So anyway, Harold, you've been, I've appreciated your humor. You have a very good wit and always prepared and very knowledgeable, very knowledgeable. You've had some very valuable experience. But where benefits and retirement issues are concerned, you have been able, you've been contributing very, very helpfully, Harold. And Terry, you've served with your heart also, and so it's been a pleasure to work. We've been a great council. We've certainly had our disagreements, but nothing too visible to the public, which is good. We have conducted ourselves in a very professional way and not had hard feelings beyond the council meeting. So I congratulate all of us on that, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. And certainly, our mayor, we'll be giving comments about our mayor later, but he's just been very proud to serve with the mayor. He's been very generous to us. You know, the beautiful points setters that he's given every year, I've enjoyed. And now, of course, these beautiful books that will be treasures forever. So Mayor, thank you so much. So the best of everything to all three of you. Thank you.
Excuse me. Councilmember Rivera.
Yeah, Councilmember Maxwell's done. He doesn't get to talk anymore. Well, I'm going to miss you guys. I think you've brought unique perspectives to this council. I have always enjoyed listening to it, working with you. On those, I think the two gentlemen in front of me have two big seats to fill for a lot of reasons, but one is because they brought entertainment to this council. And when we sit here for hours, that can be quite a welcome, welcome addition to our meeting. So I wish you both the best. Our city manager informed me earlier today that I'm now the fourth-most senior council member in the city of Bakersfield, or the fourth-most senior person sitting up here. And that's actually kind of a crazy thought. Don't worry. We've got some really smart folks up here besides that. But I wish you both the best. We'll miss you greatly and really, really do thank you for your wisdom, since I've been on the council, for your counsel, for your willingness to always hear me out, and certainly for your friendship, Terry. I appreciate that.
When I previously recognized our special guest, Councilmember Sue Benham, I failed to acknowledge Mayor-elect Karen Go, who is in the audience tonight. And a very important part of my life, my wife, Levon, is here tonight. You know, and the tag on the front of the mayor's office says, "Mayor Hall." Well, the real person that that should have on the door is Mayor Keith Turner. Keith has been my administrative assistant for eight and a half years, and certainly I would not have been able to accomplish one quarter of what I've been able to do without the dedication, the loyalty, and the outstanding service that Keith Turner has given to me as my assistant, and to the mayor's office, and to the many hundreds of constituents that she has helped. Here's our exit strategy, Harold and Terry. As Councilmembers Maxwell and Councilmember Vice, Councilmember Vice Mayor Hanson leave the dais, would Councilmember Sullivan and the newly-elected council members please
Please raise your right hand. Upon completion of the oath, please say, "I do." Do you, Andre Gonzalez, Jeff Tac, and Jackie Sullivan solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter?
I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Tac and ask if you would like to make some opening comments.
Thank you, outgoing Mayor Hall. This has been a phenomenal ride. This has been a phenomenal experience. It is so humbling to be able to sit here and look out and get to be a part of this great city. I took this on and knocked door to door and talked to people and listened to concerns. And this city, my wife and I, we were born and raised here and been here for many generations. And it is one of those things where you get so humbled by what people need and want. And it is a most humbling exercise for me to get to sit here and to be able to be of service. And with that, I say great thanks to the city of Bakersfield and to all of you for all of your kindness, your well wishes, and everything that's included in all of that. So, and I say thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gonzalez, would you like to offer some comments?
Thank you, Mayor Hall. The view is awesome from up here. I want to begin tonight by thanking former city councilman Terry Maxwell on behalf of all of the residents of Ward Two. You know, being in public service is not easy. It requires a commitment of time, energy, and personal resources in order to fulfill the duties that were called to fulfill. And so I want to thank Mr. Maxwell for his service over the last four years. I'd also like to thank tonight former councilmember Sue Benham, who is here in the audience. Ms. Benham has provided support to me throughout my campaign, for which I appreciate her immensely. And I also want you to know, former councilwoman Benham, that your leadership throughout your tenure as the Ward Two councilwoman is something that I have admired and something that I look toward as a model throughout my next four years. So thank you for being here. I also would like to recognize my family and friends who are here this evening. My mother, Rachel, who's sitting in the front, my girlfriend, Bethany, my five siblings, too many to name off, and all of my aunts and uncles and cousins and family and friends who are all here in the audience. Thank you so much for your support in walking door to door with me and talking to the thousands of voters throughout Ward Two throughout the last nine months. And finally, I'd like to thank the residents of Ward Two for giving me an opportunity to lead. It is something that I feel is a blessing, and I'm humbled to be at your service. And so I'm looking forward to working with many Ward Two residents over the next four years in order to improve the condition of our neighborhoods and to improve the condition of our community as a whole.
Before I ask Pastor Berg to provide us the benediction, I want to inform all of you that after the benediction is completed, we'll have a 15-minute recess for hospitality and recognition for the new council members in the lobby. And I will reconvene the meeting at about 6:34.
Excuse me, Mayor. I have some comments.
Could you light up your number?
Oh, well, I didn't think I needed.
After many years of sitting up here, you should know how to do that.
Well, me being just installed, I didn't think I would need to press my button, but...
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hall. Yes, well, I certainly, me being the senior member of my family, we have four generations here tonight. And so I appreciate my, three of my four children here tonight, my grandchildren, and Zoe, and Isaac. You did a beautiful job leading the pledge. But I just want to express what a privilege it is to be part of this council. And with the strong, wonderful leadership of our staff, our city manager and his very, very capable staff, we've been able to accomplish just wonderful things the past 22 years, Alan. So it's a privilege to be part of the wonderful amenities that we will have forever. And it's been a pleasure serving with our great mayor, and I'm just thankful that we have a replacement that we'll be able to continue on and do justice to our great city. But certainly want to express the, I'm thrilled. I'm thrilled at the thought of another four-year term. I'm thrilled at the thought of another four-year term. And I appreciate the confidence and support that has been shown to me for, for another term. And there are great things ahead. So, this with this handsome, beautiful council, these wonderful, now we're going to have another lady, so that's good. One very quick story. Through, through my campaign, I was invited to say a few words on the, on the radio. And so, I was being witty, and I was saying, yes, I'm the, I'm the smartest lady, I'm the most wonderful lady. I, you know, went on with several more imaginary adjectives and was distracted. And on my way home, I thought, oh, my gosh, I didn't get a chance to finish my, my, my wittiness to say, and of course, I'm the only lady on the council, but I have been, I've had the pleasure of being the, of serving with, with these very capable councilmembers. So, you know, welcome, welcome to all of you. And I, I'm just humbled and thrilled and very excited about knowing that I have the pleasure of continuing on for another term. And so, I appreciate my, my family's support, my constituent's support, and the many friends that I've had the opportunity to, to meet through these past many years. So, thank you. It's going to be a good another term.
Pastor Berg, if you could provide us the benediction, please.
This benediction comes out of 1 Thessalonians, Chapter 3, verse 11 through 13. Now may our God and Father Himself and our Lord Jesus direct our way to you. And may the Lord make you increase and abound in love for one another and for all, as we do for you, so that you may establish your hearts blameless and holiness before our God and Father at the coming of our Lord Jesus Christ with all the saints.
Thank you very much, everyone. Now, the reception will be held in the lobby, and we'll reconvene the meeting at 6:28. Thank you. It is my pleasure to reconvene the city council meeting of December the 14th, 2016, and ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Rivera?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Weir?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
I am here.
Councilmember Tac?
President.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Parlee?
Here.
Before we proceed, I request that all cellular telephones and communication devices be silenced. Pursuant to city council policy, councilmembers are prohibited from sending or receiving electronic communications during the meeting. And we request the same from our audience. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the city council chambers. Also, please be courteous in the use of any still cameras and video equipment. Audience applause is allowed during the presentation portion of the meeting, but is not permissible at any other time during the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Mayor, we, item four, please note that item B has been pulled at the request of the mayor, and we have an additional presentation to be made by Councilmember Weir. So, the first presentation is by Mayor Hall of Two Keys to the City.
Casey, that's you, man. Come on down here. Now you get to know why you're here tonight.
Hey, how are you?
All right, man. This is all about you. Everyone in our community and across Kern County has enjoyed the photography work of Casey Christie for 32 years of work with the Bakersfield Californian. I'm sure that many of you, as I do, enjoy his work every day that publishes in the Bakersfield Californian. And when you think about all of those wonderful photographs that he has done of wonderful sights in Kern County and wonderful pictures of the many animals and rodents and snakes and everything that is in our county landscape, Casey has taken a picture of them, and it's, it's so indicative of the outstanding work that he has done, showing the, the beauty and drama of Bakersfield and Kern County profoundly touching literally hundreds of thousands of newspaper and online readers. And so, tonight, Casey...
Wow.
And I'm sure, I'm sure glad that we pulled this off and you didn't know anything.
Oh, boy.
Okay?
Oh, boy.
But Casey, I'm here now to present this key to the city to you in, in recognition of your outstanding photojournalism and the beautiful work that you have done for so many years. And good luck in seven days when you retire.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you very much. We all have had the extreme benefit of Roberta Gafford and her outstanding work in accommodating everyone in the city with her duties and responsibilities as city clerk. For 32 years, Roberta has served the City of Bakersfield, and she will be retiring just a little bit before I do, but both of us will be going out at the same time. And, you know, we're going to have past clerk Pam McCarthy is going to come back and fill in for Roberta until Roberta's replacement is selected. So, I have a wonderful recognition that I wish to present to you, Roberta, for all your wonderful work and your professionalism, your positive attitude, and those thousands of scripts that you have provided for me for the city council meetings so that I make as little mistakes as I can. So, let me present to you this key to the city and wish you well in retirement, and thank you for everything that you've done.
Mayor, item B has been pulled from the agenda. Item C is a presentation to Mayor Hall from staff at AEG in appreciation for your many years of outstanding service to the City of Bakersfield.
Mayor Hall, first of all, I think you and I are about the same size, and maybe you're not going to need as many suits anymore. So, you know, you want to pass a couple along? That looks pretty good.
Thank you.
But seriously, on the half of...
Ouch. I got some real surprises for tomorrow. They're in the backseat of my car, and I want to go out and sneak a peek.
Anyway, sorry. On behalf of AEG facilities and our staff, including Ed Dorsey, who's here, and Sam Williams, we have a small gift as appreciation for your support of the arena and your unending love for the city. Thank you. I appreciate it. A rose between all these thorns.
By the way, I have sold tickets to a tour of your closet.
Mayor Kay, to our Beach Boys, the Black House Theater in September.
Thank you, Ed.
Couple of pictures, will you put on?
And Mayor, our last presentation is a presentation to Mayor Hall from Councilmember Weir on behalf of the city council.
Well, actually, my intent here was genuine, but now I'm thinking maybe I could swap this for a key to the city.
You've got to leave first.
I got to leave first. Yeah, there are times I thought I was leaving. Last meeting, huh? Last meeting with the city council. It's hard to believe. It's hard to believe I've had the honor and privilege of sitting next to you for the last 10 years, watching you, observing you, learning from you. You're an outstanding mayor, outstanding businessman, and a truly genuine, good person. And you have truly earned the title, "The Man That Was Born To Be Mayor." So, from the entire council, I have the privilege tonight to present this gift to you in hopes that during your retirement, early on, you'll be able to enjoy this gift.
Well, of course.
Now, be careful, my wife put lots of time into that last night.
It's beautiful. How's that?
Thank you. She'll be glad to hear.
Your wife, Lori, knows how to do things right.
And that she does. She still puts up with me, too.
Now, let me tell you a story about that. Now, let me open these other boxes.
Yeah, because they may be different.
This is the Buffalo license, right?
Yep.
Quad City River Bandits in Davenport, Iowa. All right, now here's the story. Five years ago, the USA Today put in one of their editions a list and illustration of all of the top minor league baseball parks in America. And so, when I was well, I started knocking two and three of those off each summer, and I still have three left to go, and I had to stop making those trips because of my health issues, okay? And the last three that I got left are Buffalo, Toledo, and Davenport, Davenport, Iowa with Quad Cities. And so, that's the significance of these sweatshirts, all right? Thank you very much. Ken, thank you very much for your very nice comments and recognition. I too have enjoyed serving with you, as with everyone. And I think we've, I think we've made a good team, and I've always tried to be as accommodating for each councilmember with your request. And I know that there have been times when maybe you got a little frustrated with me and the way I ran the meetings, but I got to tell you, man, my goal was always to run a perfect meeting because I'm a perfectionist with everything that I do. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mayor, we have public statements.
At this time, we will receive public statements. Public statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per, per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please provide the copy to the city clerk, who will then provide the necessary copies to the city council. Members of the audience are asked to avoid engaging in any behavior that disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting. Please do not criticize or impugn the mayor, the city council, or any member of the staff or the audience. The city council is very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the city council cannot take action when an item is not on the agenda. The city council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, please call the first public speaker.
Mayor, we have nine speakers this evening. The first is John Hefner, Sister City Recognition for the Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd come back?
I was going to try to stop you. This is actually a bittersweet, sweet moment for me. Tonight, I have my board members from Sister City come up. Diane, you went, we just took a trip, got returned from Corretro, Mexico with the Sister City. Mayor Hall has been our fearless leader for many, many years. We've traveled the world together. We've had great, great experiences. You know, the mayor is a great mayor in Bakersfield. He does a lot for the homeless, he does a lot for the, for everybody else, but he's also been a wonderful ambassador for our sister cities. So, we've started one with Wakayama and Bucan and...
Sushi.
Sushi came next, and then Amarstar, and then...
Quattro.
Corretro, thank, we just got back from Corretro. And we're starting a new one in Saint Jean de Luce in France for the VAS there. So, it's been fun. We've been many, many places, and this last one was Corretro. Mayor Hall, when he does anything, he does it with a pizzazz. Am I supposed to look at you guys?
If you want to be on TV, look this way, man.
That's okay. Anyway, he does a pizzazz everywhere he's gone. He's been a wonderful ambassador. When we've gone to these other cities, it's been great, but Corretro, we have a special plaque that they wanted to present him because this fellow here has given Corretro four ambulances over the years, driven them down, and also supplied all sorts of material from the fire department, his EMTs, and actually sent people down to train his, the people in the bombaderos in, in, in Corretro. And it was fascinating because the last time I was down with him after two, they were having a demonstration with his ambulance and the people that trained. And all of a sudden, they got a call. Do you remember that? Everybody got up that was trained, went to this accident, and because of what his people trained, these other bombaderos, he saved the life of an injured person in an accident. And so, I thought that was really pretty typical of the things that, that the mayor does. He touches them... does. He touches them, and they end up being wonderful things. So it's in Spanish. So, our Spanish interpreter, David Allen, is in Wakayama. Oh, okay, we're going to turn this way?
Okay. So, this is in Spanish and was given to us on behalf of the heroic body of firefighters of the city of Queretaro. We present this recognition to Mayor Harvey L. Hall with sincere gratitude for all the support received by our institution, affirming the arms of fellowship that unite Queretaro with Bakersfield in the city of Queretaro, dated December 10, 2016.
So, on behalf of our Sister City program, Diane, when she put the city word down last time, we say the program is wonderful. We, let's give him a standing ovation. It works. We appreciate that. He's a good man.
Mayor, you can stay there. We have another one. Roy and Petro Roja regarding presentation to the mayor from Kern Regional Center clients.
Hi, everybody. My name is Roy Rojo. I work for Kern Regional Center on the bound disabled client. I remember the first time I met the mayor when we're doing a conference in Bakersfield for the bound disabled clients at the Doubletree. We asked, our members asked us who we should have for our keynote speaker. And everyone bump heads and bump heads, and someone said, "How about the mayor?" And we go, "The mayor?" And say, "Yeah, okay." I called the mayor's office. I set an appointment. I came to talk to him. And I asked him, "Mayor, do you like to be our keynote speaker for our conference?" And the first thing that came out of his mouth goes, "What conference?" I said, "For the bound disabled clients." And he goes, "Sure. Do you get our awards?" I go, "Yeah, I get our awards." He goes, "Give me a list of the people you're going to get awards, and I will pay for these awards. Tonight, we're giving you a special award, Mayor. My wife's going to read it to you, and she will give it to you."
To Mayor Hall, appreciation in your support with people with disability of the Kern County area. We'd like to thank you for all your support and love that you gave the client of Kern County.
Am I free to come back?
You're free. Yes, you are.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Marvin Dean regarding Ms. Lanis' public comments.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Marvin Dean. Let me just say, the reason I'm wearing sunglasses, I don't normally wear them in a building. I had a surgery on this eye, detached retina. So, no disrespect when I'm wearing this glass. But I came down, and the reason why, I'm a lifelong resident of Bakersfield, and I come down on special occasions to speak in the public square at the council. And there's some significant things I think tonight need to be recognized. I wanted to just say real briefly before I get to the council. First of all, I want to say to the city manager, I want to commend you for two excellent appointments you made. One is sitting beside you there as Jackie, as a community planning director. And this morning, you, the recognition of the new chief. That is to be commended. You've been a quiet guy, but you've been there a long time, and you always do the right things. I have a lot of respect for what you do. I just wanted to say that, some of us from the community. Then I want to go to the council. First of all, I want to say to the council members that are not here, I'm sure they'll be watching this. First of all, I want to start on this side of the dial, I was Maxwell. We've not always had the same politics, but I think he did an excellent remarks that he made tonight. And I think sometimes you speak truth to power, and sometime when you say things people may not want to hear. But personally, just from watching from the outside, I think he meant well what he tried to do. A lot of times, he was as an odd, but I think he served his people well. Moving farther over this, Harold Hanson, Vice Mayor, I knew him when he was a banker. I've known Harold about 20 years. I mean, Harold was a very, very special guy, and I really appreciate the fact that what he served for this city. And it was really, he did a lot of things that went unnoticed. And Jackie, well, congratulations again. You did not, I don't have to say a replacement for your seat, because you've been there. You're probably now the longest-serving person. I really appreciate what you've done for this city. Now, moving over this way, I think Jeff Tackett, I think we went to school together. So, he's a local boy, and I know you're going to do a hell of a, you're going to do a good job. Excuse me, Mayor. And then on this side, Mr. Gonzalez, I'm welcome. You've been out there in the community doing a lot of things, so I'm really looking forward to working with you. And then my own councilman, Willie, excellent job. Now, closing out with the mayor. Mayor, you've been a mayor for the entire city. I had to be here because you, when you first got elected, I came to your first meeting. You've always ran a really strong council, and you're always trying to run me out of here when I get a little bit long-winded. But I had to come for your last meeting. And I wanted to say, "Job well done. Job well done." And I know your placement, Karen's sitting out here. She's got big shoes to fill, but I know she'll do a good job as well. So, thank you all, and I'm looking forward to working each and every one of you. God bless you and happy holidays.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, we have five speakers regarding Police Department and Transparency. The first is Leti De La Rosa.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Josh Stener. I am not Leti De La Rosa. I'm filling in for her.
Excuse me. Can you clearly identify your name again, please?
Yes, Josh Stener. And the reason that I'm here is, well, Mr. Tandy and I have been in communication regarding the appointment of Mr. Lyle Martin. And we just wanted to come and, you know, I guess, highlight the fact that while we are here celebrating this occasion, there is a family within our community. I think it is Ms. Sullivan in your ward who was killed at the hands of the BPD. And so, we had a press conference earlier today to highlight the fact that this continues to happen and that we have been asking for the better part of a week and a half now for input in this situation, input in what's going on. For the community to really have a voice in this situation, and we have gotten, well, we actually haven't gotten a response from you. We've gotten a response from Mr. Tandy saying pretty much that you weren't giving enough time. And so, I guess what I want to say is, you know, you wouldn't come to us, so we are here to meet with you. We still think that it's absolutely important, and actually so much more important now that somebody has lost their life. Your refusal to admit wrong has literally cost another life. And it's horribly ironic that in the week that it took for us to prepare this event, these things, and in the week that it took you to ignore us, somebody lost their life. And we strongly believe that somebody will, that people will continue to lose their lives if you continue to ignore the community. We are here. We want input on how to be policed. And so, Mr. Tandy, Chief Martin, we are still here. We are still requesting the same thing. We will not leave. And we hope that you reconsider because what happened to Mr. Stener is not an isolated incident. And we are calling for an outside and independent investigator to deal with this because we know what's going to happen if the BPD investigates themselves again. That's all.
Madam Clerk? Folks, I appreciate you being here, but remember, I admonish you all for clapping. Applause is only allowed during the presentation time of our meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Jorge Ramirez.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Jorge Ramirez. I'm here today just to, as a grieving father of a person that was also killed by the Bakersfield Police Department three years ago. You know, this process is very hard for our families to go through, not knowing, you know, straight answers from the ones in charge, the police department. I'm not here to criticize in the way you operate, but I believe that there can be some changes, and changes in the good for the community. When we reach out to you, we want to be heard. As taxpayers, we deserve answers. I'm not here to talk about anyone in particular, but this loss of my son has hurt my family very much. My father lost his life three weeks ago because of the pain of his heart. I'm talking to you from my heart that there's changes to be made, and there's room for improvement. I know a lot of you people. I've been a resident for this county for 26 years. I'm a school bus driver. I love children. I love my son, and I love my family. But I don't think it's fair when you guys turn, and I'm sorry to say that, I've not pointed it out to you in it specifically, but as general, to turn our back on us when we request answers. It took me a year and two months to get an answer from the police department, a police report. It took them two hours to bring my son's record. My son didn't deserve to die that night. He was here helping the police department to bring a criminal. And they gave him the death sentence. They gave me the death sentence that day, and my whole entire family. My father's gone. You know, he told me the day before he died, he said, "Son, fight for what is right." Sir, I ask you to do the right thing for our people of this community. I would never leave this community. I love children. I love my community. But I'm not going to stand behind hiding and thinking that everything's okay because it's not. It's time to wake up. Sir, I respect all of you, but I don't think it's fair for us to continue to be ignored like if we were citizens from another country. We are taxpayers, and we demand change. Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Joey Williams.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Joey Williams. I'm the Director of Faith in the Valley Kern. Congratulations to everybody. You guys had enough ceremony tonight. I won't get into that. Congratulations to Mr. Tandy on your selection of Chief Martin. I just want to revert back to Psalms. I know that you quoted that this morning, Mr. Tandy. You had said, "With my whole heart have I sought thee; let me not wander from thy commandments; thy word have I hid in my heart, that I might not sin against thee." Last night, the commandment of "Thou shalt not kill" on Monday night, in honoring our fathers, was not taken seriously. In Ward Six, a man, Mr. Francisco Serna, was gunned down by the Bakersfield Police Department, shot several times, seven times. I stand here because Faith in the Valley seeks to better the lives of our community. And I stand with Eduardo Serna Hernandez, the grandson, please stand, of Mr. Francisco Serna. And I don't recall any public official being there last night at his vigil, but we look forward to moving forward. Chief Williamson, you know, I know he stepped out, but we want to congratulate him on his early retirement and know that he mentioned in Bakersfield, California, that the new chief would be donated with the task of building trust and addressing the officer-involved shootings. A step in building trust is holding officers accountable. We're not against law enforcement, but we need to hold folks accountable. If I do something against somebody, I'll be held accountable. I'll go to prison. We need the same thing. And building that accountability will win the trust of the community. I know you selected, Mr. Tandy, but we want to select you, too, Chief Martin. And we want to stand with you and work with you on this. So, what we're asking for is the independent investigation of this incident. There's groups that do it, like Michael Janaco out of OIR. And what we're asking, if this is not met in a timely manner, we're reaching out to the California Department of Justice with Attorney General Becerra. And we're asking and calling for the DOJ to help give us some relief. That is not a threat. That is just that right now, we are in a critical time, a state of emergency, because public safety right now, our people are in danger of being killed. I don't want to see, Mr. Serna was five years older than my father. You know my father, Mr. Gonzalez. I would hate for that to happen to my father. And I wish you well. I hope to work with you, Mr. Rivera, Ms. Sullivan, whoever would be willing to work with us on this. Let's come together and do this. I thank you for your time. Have a good night. God bless you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Malvina Fernandez Lopez.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Malvina Fernandez Lopez. I was born and raised here, but I don't live here anymore because I had to flee this county due to domestic violence, corruption, not just in the courts, in the police department with three chiefs of police. But I was driving by when I saw what was happening, and I decided to stop by because I work with several organizations where I live in my car while my rapist lives in the same apartment he raped me at, due to everything that began here in Kern County. And I spoke to Mr. Tandy earlier. And what I believe, what might help Bakersfield, which is something that Sacramento has and uses, it's called an Office of Public Safety Accountability through the city manager's office. What it is, is a group of citizens, not the police, that oversees the police department, that whenever there's any problems, they are the ones who investigate and look into the problems. They are the ones who act kind of as mediators, and they look into the excessive force, if it was indeed excessive force, or due to the lack of training, or the not following of the laws, or to the violations of the constitutions, just as I am doing now for each and every individual judicial officer, including Jenny Gennaro, who still has my video when I was graciously picked up and body slammed here in the police department, which I have injuries. So, I know exactly what, because right after the other person was killed in May of 2013, I was picked up and body slammed. I had been not just a victim of domestic violence, but of a hate crime. And when I was raped this year, I was racially profiled, then treated like a criminal suspect. I can tell you about so many crimes that the police have committed, judicial officers and officers and officers of the court. They don't have immunity when they do it under the color of state law. And I would be, am more willing to help these individuals with their constitutional rights, which override state, city, and public policy, because the Constitution is the supreme law of the land. So if you're not willing to help them with their reports, I will. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker. Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Bill Spellings. I represent Cop Block, we police the police. My question is, we just had another shooting, and you're aware of it, Mr. Serna. I am a Parkinson's patient. I lock up. At night, I have to walk with a cane. I don't feel safe anymore in my own town. I feel safer living on Lakeview Avenue rather than Southwest Bakersfield. Why is it, and I'm going to ask this directly, Chief Martin, are you going to give your officers tasers and teach them how to use them correctly, or are you not going to do that? Could you answer that now?
Mr. Spellings, I do not allow speakers to interact with the staff.
Okay.
So please proceed.
Then, then I would like an answer to that question as soon as possible. And I want to know, are you going to work with the new mayor to get the mayor interacting with the chief of police, make sure that gets done? Another thing is, the, the police need to be trained on what to look for with these people. I do lock up when I walk. Now, are they going to mistake my locking up as being suspect as bad behavior? Is this going to be a continued issue in this city? Do people like myself have to fear at night when we walk? I have leg issues at night, if I don't walk, I don't sleep. That's the problem. If I can't walk in my own neighborhood because I'm afraid the police are going to shoot me because I use a cane, what do I do? Where do I go? Do you have any answers? No, you don't. I walk at night because I feel safer at night. At daytime, dogs run free in my neighborhood and I can't. So when you come up with better answers, you please let me know. Until then, I'm going to be policing the police, and every time they make a wrong move, I'm posting it. And I want answers to my questions. And as far as Serna's go, I'm going to be watching this case extremely close, under the microscope. I'm holding the city liable for this case personally with Cop Block. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, the last speaker is Mary Helen Barrow regarding congratulations and new leadership
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
I'm, I'm Mary Helen Barrow, I live at 201 Jefferson Street, and I've lived in Bakersfield almost 40 years. I came to this community from Los Angeles, where I worked for many, many years with the police department there, with Chief Ed Davis, to help them reach out to the community of color, and worked with their Chicanos on the force that didn't know how to speak Spanish very well. I will do anything I can to help you and you, our new chief, to come together. We are in so much pain, and for too long, for too long, some concerns haven't really been addressed properly. I know the police department, Mr. Tandy, and the council all felt you were doing the best you could. It's not good enough. I had the P.I. ask me, gee, Mary Helen, well, we invite people to the meetings, but they didn't come. It's not what you do, it's how you did it. You didn't do it right. You need to do better. One of the things that we've talked about are possible expansion of the chief's Community Liaison Committee, if you could have an open invitation to have people serve on your committee, meet with them weekly, or monthly, rather, excuse me, monthly, but then have an open meeting that is open to the public, maybe quarterly, so that the people could come in and talk to you and your staff, and express their concerns, and exchange ideas. We, we need to feel that we're on the same team, chief. We don't feel that now. And it's so important, some of us do because we're used to working with law enforcement, but the vast majority of the community does not feel that way, particularly our community of color, our immigrants, and families that have been victimized by shootings that they feel were unjust. So let's work together. I will do anything that I can in my own little way, as will many of us together, but let's please make this one of the top priorities in the coming months. I want to congratulate you all that have been elected. Congratulations to our new chief and Mayor Hall. We're going to miss you sorely. Karen, you've got big shoes to fill, but I know you're going to do a good job, and I know you'll try your best. And we look for your help in this, in this important task of bringing our community and our police department together. Thank you all very much.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
The next item is 7A Appointments. One appointment to the Fire Civil Service Board due to the expiration of term of Thomas Edmonds, whose term expires December 31, 2016. Two applications were received from Thomas Edmonds and Ralph Burnett.
As the city clerk provides ballots to the city council, I would like to clarify for the public the voting process. Although the city council will use ballots, the outcome of the vote will be made public by the city clerk. Based on these results, the city council will then make the appropriate motion regarding each appointment. Following the council meeting, the individual ballots will be available for public review
Mayor, the tally reveals that Mr. Edmonds has received unanimous votes of the council.
Councilmember Weir for a motion for appointment.
I move appointment of Thomas Edmonds.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
I want to recognize Mr. Edmonds because he is present this evening with his wife, Irene. Thomas Edmonds has been an outstanding appointee to this committee, is very loyal and very interested in assisting with whatever he can do as a commissioner to make work easier for this committee. So thank you very much, Mr. Edmonds, for your time of service. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Item B is appointments of three regular committee members and four alternate committee members to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee due to expiration of terms of Kyle Carter and Norma Jean Jackson, David Taylor and Patrick Fraze, Bob LaRude and Sophia Felix, and the resignation of Grant Obenchain for Ward Seven.
Nominations are being made by councilmembers Gonzalez, Tac, Sullivan, and Parlier. I will call on each one of you to make your nomination for the appointments of your regular committee members and your alternate committee members. Ward Seven has only one alternative appointment. We will then vote on all of your nominations at once. Councilmember Tac and Councilmember Parlier, am I correct that you would like to extend the recruitment and defer your appointments to the January 4th council meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that is a true statement. I would like to refer until January 4th. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, your nominations for the regular and alternate committee members, please.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Hall. I'd like to nominate as regular member Monica Keeter and as alternate, Norma Jackson.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Councilmember Sullivan, your nominations for the regular and alternate committee members, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My regular member, Bob LaRude, is willing to continue, so I am asking for him to be the regular, and then Sophia Felix will be the alternate, she's willing to continue
I'm very knowledgeable of these two nominees that councilmember Sullivan has presented. Both of these individuals have provided outstanding service to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee and are very worthy of these appointments. You have a motion, please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, do I need to call on councilmember Weir for a motion?
No, Mayor, no, Mayor, we can go to the next item.
Next item, please.
One appointment to the Police Civil Service Board due to the expiration of term of Michael Strong, whose term expires December 31, 2016. Applications for appointment were received from Ronald Wolf, Mike Payne, Ralph Burnett, Mayor, the tally reveals unanimous vote by the council for Mr. Payne.
Councilmember Weir?
I move appointment of Mr. Payne for Police Service Board.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
I would like to recognize Mr. Strong for the four years of service that he provided to the Police Civil Service Board. Thank you very much for your service. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Mayor, the next item is eight new business election of Vice Mayor.
At this time, I will take a nomination for Vice Mayor. Councilmember Weir?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I submit Councilmember Bob Smith for Vice Mayor.
Are there any other nominations? The nominations are closed. Councilmember Smith, will you accept the nomination as Vice Mayor?
I will, thank you.
Everyone, you now have a, a motion in front of you to appoint Councilmember Bob Smith as Vice Mayor. Please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item nine, under Consent Calendar 9A through 9AV for approval.
Vice Mayor Smith, please.
Do any councilmembers wish to abstain from any items for conflict of interest? Yes, Mr. Tac.
Good, thank you very much. I, Councilmember Jeff Tac, will abstain from the following agenda items due to following complex business investment or position. The proposed action affects the financial interests that I have in investment or business holding Waterways Irrigation, I'm in the irrigation business, for agenda items nine A, D, and nine G. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers wish to remove any item from the agenda for separate consideration? Yes, Councilmember Weir?
Thank you, I'd like to remove item eight W. Is that eight? Nine W, sorry.
Thank you. And then we'll make a motion to approve consent items calendars eight A through eight AV. I'm sorry, yes, this is items nine A through nine AV with the exception of nine W.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Councilmember Weir on item nine W as William.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to adjust the term of the contract for consulting services for January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017. I talked with the city manager about this earlier today, and, and he was okay with that adjustment. So with that, I will make that motion.
I'm sorry, could you repeat those dates? I didn't.
It would be one year, beginning January 1st, 2017, and expiring December 31st, 2017.
Thank you.
You have a motion for approval on item nine W. Please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Councilman Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember Rivera, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Two, two items I wanted to note. One, we had our fourth annual holiday pajama party yesterday. Councilmember Parlier and I dressed in pajamas. And for those of you who aren't aware of what it is, it's not to get together and wear pajamas, we actually have partnered up with the Bakersfield Homeless Center now for a few years. We actually have partnered up with the Bakersfield Homeless Center now for a few years and have been able to provide every child at the homeless center a pajama set for Christmas. In addition to that, the Hatted family has generously also bought gifts to honor gift wish lists for every one of those gifts at the homeless center as well. So I thank everyone who participated in that. We had a huge delivery from Mayor Harvey Hall during the event as well, which was greatly appreciated. I think he made it possible to give three pajamas to each kid, which was fantastic and very much appreciated. So thank you, Mayor. The other item I'm excited about is in my ward, and I want to make sure it's on everyone's radar relating to the Martin Luther King Center. We've had a lot of work going on over there for the last two years, and we will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the gym refurbishing, which I've seen, looks fantastic, looks brand-new. And I would welcome anyone who's available on December 23rd to stop by for a little bit. I don't know if that is the Mayor Hall's last ribbon-cutting, but it will certainly be close. He will be there as well. So I look forward to that event and would welcome anyone who is available. Other than that, Merry Christmas and have a good next few weeks. Thank you.
Councilmember Parlier?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to ask staff to came up tonight and kind of which direction do you face when the people are talking to the crowd? And we have monitors up here where we can see what's going on. Of course, we can just look out. But if staff could check into the possibility of each side to put monitors up so the audience would be able to observe when the crowd is or presenters are facing the dais and the audience isn't necessarily seeing what's going on, I'd sure appreciate that. And with that, wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. I just wanted to make a comment this evening. Since it is your last meeting, Mayor Hall, I wanted to thank you for your leadership. And on a personal note, wanted to thank you for inspiring me to actually enter into public service. I met you 16 years ago, as you know, when I was 18-years-old, and the mayor wasn't the mayor, but he was about to run for mayor. And I wanted to get involved with his campaign, and so I called his campaign office. And I was able to actually sit down with the mayor personally, one-on-one. And I thought perhaps it would just be a quick five-minute conversation. But Mr. Hall met with me for over an hour as a high school senior. He took that much time with me to learn about who I was and what my hopes were for the community, and that always has stuck with me, the amount of importance and the amount of business that you have every day. For you to take the time for a high school senior, that significant amount of time really meant a lot to me. So, Mayor, I remember your slogan, "Unity in the Community," and that's always stuck with me, and I think that is needed more now than ever before. And so as one councilman, I'm hoping to champion that theme for the next four years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. I, once again, Mayor, want to thank you for the beautiful job you've done as our mayor. And you've made us, the city of Bakersfield, very proud, and you've made us all on this council look very good. And, yeah, I'd like, we'd all like to see your closet and your, we're going to miss your beautiful wardrobe, your handsome smile and all of that. So you've done a beautiful job, and not too many people could fill your shoes. But Karen, you have the heart for the city also, and, you know, going to also be a hands-on mayor, and it's going to be wonderful to work with you. So we're just, we're going to be very proud of you also, Karen. Excuse me. And Roberta, Roberta, you're just a prized jewel. It's going to be difficult. I will be a good sport continuing on without you as our city clerk, but it's going to be, it's going to take some getting used to, Roberta. The courtesy that you, the fairness and the courtesy that you show to all of us is noticeable and extremely, extremely appreciated and has put you very dear to our hearts. So we, the only way I can be happy that you're leaving is you're going to be, you are retiring. What a wonderful word. So all that goes along with that, Roberta, with your new life and a wonderful new chapter that you're going to be entering into. You've just earned every day that you can sleep in. Goodness, you've earned it. So anyway, Roberta, you have some shoes that are going to, I won't say be impossible to fill, but pretty close. They will be filled, and we'll be delighted with our new clerk. But anyway, we just wish you well. You've been wonderful. You'll certainly be a friend forever, Roberta. And our Chief Williamson, I want to thank the dedicated work that he has done and just always done his best. And he is also retiring, so very, very happy for him. And then, of course, our new police chief, Lyle. Chief Martin, wow, first time I've said that. But we're going to be saying that a lot, and you're going to be a wonderful chief for our city. You will have our complete support and just call on us in any way, but we have a good grapevine set up already, and we know when there's a need. But we wish you well. Your job is a difficult one. We are very much aware of that and got some tough issues ahead, but you will be honest, you will be fair, you will be dedicated, you will always do your best, and you will be, you'll have your heart in everything that you do, Chief Martin. So wishing you, wishing you the best. You're going to be, do a great job and be a great chief for our city. And so this wonderful, good-looking new council, just very briefly, I met you first, Andre, when you were, I believe, a junior at East High. You were a volunteer for the Bakersfield AIDS Project, and I admired you then as a young man that I was seeing for the first time. And I hear you're this handsome young man now and sharing the dais with us. So you're going to be a wonderful addition. And Jeff, you know, I've known you for a long time with the political events that we have both enjoyed supporting and attending. So anyway, we are in good hands. I'm really excited about this, these four years that are coming for the, this new term that we're just all starting, well, those of us, and two years more for the others. But wishing everybody a Merry Christmas, and Mayor Hall, we love you. We want you to be young and healthy forever and ever. And so I'm glad you have such a good partner with your wife and your lovely family that you are very dedicated to. So just wishing you the best, and I know we'll see you around, so that's what we want to do. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just also wanted to welcome the new councilmembers and look forward to working together. You've both served the community in various ways up until now and look forward to your service on the council, and we have a lot of opportunities in Bakersfield to work together, and so appreciate that. I want to thank my fellow colleagues for the vote of confidence in the Vice Mayor position, and I will do my best to serve you well there and wish the community a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
You know, I know that there was quite a bit of recognition for me this evening because I will be departing on January the 3rd. I certainly do appreciate all of the recognition that was given to me by the councilmembers and the gift. I can't hardly wait to get to Jackson Hole where it's 22-degrees and wear those sweatshirts that you gave me. But you know, I'm really disappointed that I'm not going to be able to continue to serve with my two longtime friends, Andre Gonzalez and Jeff Tac, because I would thoroughly enjoy the opportunity to help them and mentor them through the process of city council government. You know, I know that there's been a lot of publicity given to my new legacy book, and I got to tell you that the sales have been tremendous. I had a book signing party last night at the convention center, and we had 200 people come for signing those books, and today the sales were brisk again. People wanting to have copies of the legacy book can purchase them through the mayor's office or at the ambulance company at 20th and O Street. This is a work of love for me. I've loved this community more and more each day as mayor, but to be able to acknowledge the people and the positive businesses that we have in Bakersfield with this legacy book, I feel so blessed that I've been able to do that. This morning, I, along with Councilmember Weir, were able to attend Chief Martin's badge-pinning ceremony. And both Alan Tandy and Lyle Martin had very pointed comments to make this morning. I know that each of them have a sense of urgency to bring together this community. Unity in the community has been my theme since I became mayor. I've tried to be a mayor for all the people. I want everyone to know that I believe that through Alan Tandy's leadership and Lyle Martin's new opportunity to appoint and make possible new careers for a number of his administrative staff, which undoubtedly will bring new vision. The city council at our last meeting approved all of those new position changes, and I'm sure that Lyle will pull together a responsible team of administrators and people who are able to give guidance, positive guidance, and new guidance to the uniform personnel of the Bakersfield Police Department. Law enforcement constantly is subjected with hourly, daily challenges to perform their work. I know that the officers of the Bakersfield Police Department go out every day to achieve the best law enforcement service that they can provide. No one likes to be involved in catastrophes that cost lives, but the confidence that this community needs to bring forward immediately is to recognize that Chief Martin has a vision. He has a vision for new direction. He has a vision for new training. He recognizes that through new leadership, he can accomplish his goals and objectives. But as a community, everyone must stand behind our new police department leadership and know that every day they will continue to make law enforcement better in our Bakersfield community. And I would hope that everyone that hears these comments tonight from the mayor will recognize the value of the many contributions that each and every citizen makes to the betterment of our community. And that includes supporting our police department and the uniform personnel. I wish Lyle Martin continued success. He's done an outstanding job as the Assistant Police Chief. I know that the command staff that he will be redesigning in the very near future will be one of more responsible police work. When you look at the opportunity that Chief Martin has been given by the appointment by the city manager, I'm sure that Lyle Martin has envisioned for 25-years or more his goal of someday leading the Bakersfield Police Department. Not only is this an opportunity for he and his family, but it's an opportunity for our community to encourage and to support the leadership that Lyle Martin is going to bring to the Bakersfield Police Department. I thank all of you for all of the recognition. I can't say that I'm looking forward to January the 3rd when I'll no longer be mayor. I've made so many, many positive friendships with every level of leadership with the city. I'm going to miss the opportunities that I was given to assist through our leadership team with the city in making Bakersfield the best city in America. Our community is one of progress and prosperity. Let us not overlook the single-digit unemployment that we've enjoyed in the city for the last three years, and how that has created new jobs and new opportunities for many citizens in our community. As I go out, having cut well over 950 ribbons in my 16-years, every one of them was an honor and a pleasure for me to do that. And most importantly, was the opportunity to give recognition to new businesses and businesses that came to our city to reinvest and hire more people. Our Bakersfield community of businesses is constantly thriving, and I feel bad that the price of oil continues to create issues for our community. But I can tell you, as I read the sales tax reports, people are still investing in our city, spending their money in our city, creating sales tax volume for our city budget. The people of Bakersfield and surrounding areas still have confidence that our community and our city is going to continue to thrive. and our city is going to continue to thrive. I hope that all of you will enjoy the holiday season. I look forward to being showed in the door on January the 3rd like Councilmember Maxwell and Vice Mayor Hanson were given tonight. But the city manager and the city clerk have given me some opportunity with the final agenda, and I'm excited about that. I'm excited to be a part of Mayor-elect Karen Go's inauguration to the 26th mayor of the city of Bakersfield. I'm certain, having spent a great deal amount of time with President or Mayor-elect Go in the last week, I know that she brings to the mayor's position a very positive attitude, one in which she has a desire to develop and continue to develop our city's progress because of her life's work in the community with the less fortunate people that she has helped, families, children. She knows the landscape for helping create opportunities for the less fortunate in our community, including the homeless. I'm certain that she will bring a positiveness to the mayor's position. I'm certain that she will be a person of engagement, of being able to reach out to this community and succeed in bringing honor and recognition to everyone that makes up our business community, our service community, our families, our children, and our less fortunate. So I wish Mayor-elect Go every bit of credit that I can give to you for succeeding with your election, and I hope that you will recognize and appreciate the mayor's job because it is a wonderful opportunity to be able to give back to this community and continue to build, to make Bakersfield the best city in America. If there are no further council comments, we stand adjourned.